I call a special meeting of the city council for the purpose of the state of the city to order, and I'd like to take a roll at this time Denise.
Councilors Anderson, Benega, Brown, Costello, Jamison, Knutson, Litz, Staggers.
Quorum present. I'd like to welcome Reverend Randy Rasmussen from the Emmanuel Baptist Church in Sioux Falls who will give the invocation, and after invocation please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Please join me in prayer. Almighty God of heaven and earth, we bow before you today thankful for your goodness to us. We are thankful for this time of peaceful and orderly assembly, for the men and women who so faithfully serve our community by providing leadership and service to our citizens. Bless these servants with the wisdom to know right and the courage to do right. We are thankful for those public servants who daily sacrifice their well-being to maintain order and respond to crisis. Bless these servants with safety and strength for their duties. We are thankful for the commerce that thrives in our community. We ask that you would bless those who are honest and fair in their business dealings. We're thankful for a structure of government that's based on reason and justice and committed to the common good. Bless those who serve for the welfare of our community. In our community and country, Lord, there has been enough light and liberty to recognize your blessings, yet we do take your gifts for granted. Forgive us, and forgive us for not being all that you have expected us to be. Lord teaches to love each other and protect us from the enemies that threaten from within, the enemies of insensitivity, self-centeredness, and bigotry. Lord, use the growing diversity of cultures in our community to develop our capacities to live in harmony. Help us to be a community of considerate neighbors, and as a people with plenty even in the hard times, help us to share our abundance with those truly in need. Now we lift our community to you, Lord, and we pray for your blessing upon families and singles, upon the young and the old, upon the weak and the strong, upon the employed and the unemployed. With hope and trust in you, Lord, we commend our community into your care. And so we pray for peace in our world, peace in our country, peace in our community, peace in our neighborhoods, peace in our homes, and peace in our hearts. I offer this prayer in the name of the one who truly did live a life of peace, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again Reverend Rasmussen for your words. Good afternoon. I'm glad to see so many people here today and welcome our Channel 16 viewers. Let me take a moment to recognize our city council members. Kenny Anderson Jr., Gerald Benega, Vernon Brown, Pat Costello, Greg Jamison, Dee Knutson, Bob Litz, and Kermit Staggers. And thank you again for being here and for your ongoing support of our city. I'd also like to thank our staff, the city directors, and all city employees for their service to Sioux Falls. Their careful planning, responsible management, and progressive vision have helped create the city that we all enjoy. There's an old saying that says, "May you be blessed to live in interesting times." We can certainly say that's what we're going through right now. These are changing uncertain times, and there's no clear guide for how to navigate through them. But we are fortunate in Sioux Falls that we've laid a solid foundation that will sustain us now, and we must look at these times as an opportunity to emerge stronger. People are still moving to our city. We ended 2008 with a population of 154,100 people. That's an increase of nearly 3,000 residents from the year before. I expect as more people learn about the opportunities available in our city, we will see that number continue to grow. In fact, the Census Bureau recently recognized Sioux Falls as the fastest-growing metro area in the Midwest. So clearly, we're leaders in our region. I'm not sure you'll find a single city, major city, that hasn't seen unemployment increases recently. That's also true in Sioux Falls. Our most recent figures show an unemployment rate of 4.7 percent. To give you some perspective, that's 2 percent more than at this time a year ago. It's also below the national average of 8.1 percent. The positive news is that we added 1,900 non-farm jobs in 2008, and if plans for development unfold this year, we will continue to add jobs in Sioux Falls. We were also recently named one of the top five cities nationwide for job prospects this spring through Manpower Employment Outlook Survey. 2008 was the year our economic activity nationwide began to slow down. So I think it speaks volumes about Sioux Falls that 2008 was one of our top three years for building construction. It truly shows companies continue to invest in our city in spite of the uncertainty. In 2008, our building permits added up to $454 million. Let me remind you, that follows our record year in 2007. So we clearly have the ability to sustain our growth and development. We're also outpacing other cities in our region. For example, Lincoln, Nebraska recorded $436 million, and Fargo, North Dakota had $300 There are significant challenges in the housing market, and that's nationwide. Again, I think it's unrealistic to think Sioux Falls would be completely untouched by these major changes in the market. But we're still fortunate that our housing is growing. We added 509 new single-family houses in 2008 and 985 other housing units like twin homes, townhouses, and apartments. This gives us a total of 1,494 housing units. To give you some perspective, Rapid City added 551 units. One reason for Sioux Falls' continued growth is success of our medical community. Our largest project in 2008 was the Avera Cancer Institute, which is scheduled to open next fall. In addition, the Sanford Children's Hospital is now open for patients. The Sanford Research Park will break ground this spring in southwestern Sioux Falls, and the Sanford Heart Hospital will get underway as well. These are all positive and encouraging developments that will bring more opportunities to Sioux Falls residents in the future. On the east side, we are fortunate that major new retailers are continuing to expand in Sioux Falls. This fall, Target will open as part of the Dolly Farm Village. The new Target will be one of less than 70 new stores opening for the company nationwide. When these major shopping destinations choose a location, other retailers and restaurants follow, and we expect the same development on our east side. This also reinforces the need to continue our progress on South Dakota Highway 100. If one mile of this major corridor attracts Targets, Kohl's, and other retailers, imagine what the entire 18-mile project will do for development in our region. We know it is a significant investment, but I truly believe it will pay off many times over, and I'm hopeful we can build an additional mile this year. But if we can accelerate that progress, the benefits will come much sooner. Education in Sioux Falls continues to advance at all levels. This year, University Center is opening a new building for classes, plus a research center, and enrollment continues to grow. At last count, 2,500 students attended classes here. We're also anticipating construction of a new Sioux Falls Career and Technical Education Academy for high school students, along with continued construction of elementary schools in Sioux Falls and the surrounding districts. I'm also encouraged by our continued downtown development. Areas that used to be abandoned or underutilized are now thriving, and the abandoned or underutilized are now thriving and encouraging more investment. The first phase of the Uptown at Falls Park project is now open for business. Retailers and restaurants are invigorating our east bank, and our loft apartments are nearly all filled with residents. Another way we preserve and revitalize downtown is through our facade easement program. The before and after pictures you see here illustrate the change this program can make to historic buildings. The building you're looking at is part of Larson Square. Since the city invested in its facade, all of its loft apartments are occupied, offices have moved into the lower level, and a restaurant is open for business. Downtown development also depends on parking. We need to make sure we can accommodate people who live, work, and visit downtown by providing enough places for them to park. In the next two years, we hope to see significant additions for parking downtown. We foresee construction of more parking to accommodate development, which will help work toward eventually removing the river ramp. We also know that we need to keep providing improved public transportation through Sioux Falls Transit. 2008 was a record year with more than 1 million riders using the system. Later this year, we will unveil 16 replacement fixed route buses, which will feature an updated look, be ADA accessible, and enhance the quality and image of our transit system. Traffic flow downtown will improve once we relocate railroad tracks in our switching yard. We are completing our environmental assessment and expect to begin design and hopefully construction on the Burlington Northern New Switching Yard in northeast Sioux Falls later this year. The next phase will then move forward with removing all rails downtown except for the two that will carry the trains north or south and east. The area between 6th and 8th Street will also be revitalized with development on the existing Shoneman's Lumber Yard. We have been fortunate to have Shoneman's downtown for more than a century, but things do change, and now we have an opportunity to redevelop more than four acres along the Big Sioux River with a mix of retail, residential, and hotel space. It truly will be exciting to watch this area take shape in the next several years. The Shoneman's Project, along with Sharapa Place and others, underscores the need to develop our River Greenway. We absolutely must take more advantage of the riverfront by opening it up for recreation, entertainment, and business. This year, we plan to remove an aging bridge between 6th and 8th Street, which will allow us to move forward with constructing the first phase of the River Greenway Project. I also envision artwork along our riverfront, which will complement the art we're already adding downtown. Recently, we added a diversity sculpture along North Phillips Avenue, and our annual Sculpture Walk exhibit continues to grow and attract international interest. We're also fortunate that many of our sculptures have remained in Sioux Falls for our permanent collection of artwork. Finally, downtown will see another major investment through this spring's Phillips Avenue Reconstruction Project. The pavement between 10th and 12th Streets need to be replaced. In addition, this project gives us a chance to add to the character of Phillips Avenue with more areas for outdoor seating, lighting, and landscaping. This project will serve as a model for the rest of downtown, and we're looking forward to it being finished in time for our first big downtown events. We'll also be starting some other major projects soon. First, we'll take a look at our development-driven street expansions. A key project this year involves Sotoma Avenue between 12th and 26th Street. This will go from a two-lane road to a five-lane road and will ease congestion on our growing west side. We're also planning to expand roads in northwest Sioux Falls, including Benson Avenue from I-29 to Career Avenue. 3,000 to 4,000 people are already employed in the area, with more on the way, and this two-lane road cannot handle the traffic. And there'll be road expansions in southern Sioux Falls as well, including 69th Street west of Tall Grass Avenue. This expansion will move traffic near the growing research park and the commercial development. In addition to expanding streets, we focused on maintaining our system of roads. In 2009, we will be resurfacing or reconstructing nearly 250 blocks. As you can see on this map, our projects will improve neighborhood streets across the A major project for the next two years will involve our flood control system. Thanks to the support of our city council, our congressional delegation, and the Corps of Engineers, we will complete the majority of this project by the end of 2010 and remove 1,600 properties that are in the floodplain. I'm also hopeful that this project will be included as part of the recent federal economic stimulus package. If funds are made available, this will greatly reduce the amount of borrowing the city will need to do in order to finish construction. Another key federal project is the Lewis and Clark Regional Water System. Recently, we were pleased to learn that $27 million in funding is included in the federal budget for 2009. Construction is already underway in Phase 1 of the water treatment plant just north of Vermillion. We expect to award a bid on Phase 2 of the treatment plant by June of this year, and I am confident that Lewis and Clark will be delivering water to the city of Sioux Falls by mid-2012. Water conservation is just one of the ways we're striving to be more environmentally friendly in Sioux Falls. This year, we hired a sustainability coordinator to help guide our efforts. She'll be working on a master plan for recycling as well as other initiatives that will help make us a leader in green practices and technology. That's just one example of how we're planning our future. We also continue to look long-term at our infrastructure needs. It's absolutely critical that the state of South Dakota partner with us to build the major roads that will literally drive our development. From Highway 100 to an interchange at 85th and Interstate 29, along with the expansion of other key roads, these projects need to be completed and will bring private investments and wonderful opportunities for our citizens. In addition to expanding our borders, we need to focus on preserving our existing neighborhoods. When areas of town are allowed to deteriorate, it becomes very hard to bring them back. Fortunately, in Sioux Falls, we have many residents who care about their neighborhoods and want to work with us to make sure they remain clean, safe, quality places to live. I'm very proud of the progress we made in our Pettigrew Heights neighborhood. We demolished or removed 10 dilapidated structures to make way for affordable housing and new businesses. As part of this development, we are also excited to open a Housing Resource Center. This facility will provide Pettigrew Heights residents with access to information they need to be responsible tenants and property owners. As the neighborhood continues to redevelop, we also expect to add a community park and Another neighborhood that we're focusing on is the Whittier Neighborhood on the city's northeast side. We are lucky to work with a group of committed residents on projects like Neighborhood Cleanup and Neighborhood Watch. They're also focusing on traffic and general safety issues around their schools and parks, which shows their ongoing commitment to strengthen their neighborhood. One way we keep all neighborhoods in good condition is through code enforcement. Because enforcing codes involves many departments, we are always looking for ways to improve the code enforcement, and a significant improvement is collecting fines that are owed to the city. And a change in the state law is important to make sure we can do it more efficiently. But what is also important is making sure citizens understand what's required then for property maintenance. We are producing education pieces about our code enforcement process so that our residents understand their responsibilities and have easy access to our city requirements. Neighborhood revitalization is another way we stabilize the core area of Sioux Falls. In 2008, we were involved in 21 projects to acquire, raise, construct, and sell homes in our older neighborhoods. As you can see from these photos, we truly transform properties through these great programs. Community Development's Single Family Housing Rehabilitation Project is another important program in maintaining our older neighborhoods. This program provides financial assistance to low- and moderate-income homeowners in the form of low-interest and deferred no-interest loans. These are especially critical funds as more people face economic hardship. In 2008, 42 rehabilitation projects on single-family homes were completed. Repairs included electrical and plumbing, furnace replacements, siding replacements, plumbing repairs, roofing, windows, and more. It is also gratifying to hear from people who have been personally impacted by the programs we provide. One resident told us, "We would not have been able to make the changes needed on our home without community development. It is a great program, and we appreciate it very much. Thank you." Another told us, "Thank you for the true blessing you have given me. It is so wonderful to have windows that finally open and to know it will no longer be raining in my basement. I drive by my home slowly every time I am out and just admire the work that was completed. I am anxious to slowly continue to improve my property. Thank you so very much." When we pay close attention to the condition of our neighborhoods, we also have a positive impact on public safety. Along with our city council, I believe we have agreed on a solid plan for steadily increasing our police force as our population grows. This will allow us to continue our strong response times and our community outreach efforts. In 2008, we had more than 83,000 calls for service to our police department. Of those, four were homicides; that's up from two in 2007. Crimes in other categories also tended to increase slightly. Community policing has been and will continue to be a priority of the Sioux Falls Police Department. We have assigned officers to permanent quadrants of the city so that they can work with the citizens in that area to provide the best police service. These officers are familiar with the people in the area and can address ongoing problems, recognize new problems, and build relationships with citizens. This year, we're changing the way we approach scheduling our police officers on patrol. Through federal grant dollars, we purchased a staffing software package to analyze our allocation of resources. We determined that there are ways that we can better utilize our existing officers. Starting this year, we added two additional 10-hour shifts to overlap our existing 8-hour shift. We call these power shifts. They're designed to provide us more officers on duty during peak times for police calls. We're anxious to see the results of this new approach and are confident that this will be a good move for the department. Another successful change was the addition of our Streets Crime Unit. Their mission is to identify and document and prosecute gang members and their associates. Since 2008, this unit has responded to 1,700 calls for service. They've also identified 32 gangs in Sioux Falls with 269 members. With continuous pressure on gang members, 2008 has seen crime continue to drop in the Pettigrew Heights neighborhood. This is primarily due to the arrest and prosecution of several of the most active and violent gang members. We're also fortunate to have superior fire rescue services in our city. In 2008, Sioux Falls Fire Rescue was reaccredited by the Commission for Public Safety Excellence. This is truly an honor. Only 200 out of 32,000 fire departments in the United States have achieved this status as accredited agencies. Clearly, this distinction speaks to the excellent services provided by our fire department. Another important way to measure our fire service is through our Insurance Service Office, or ISO rating. This is the basis for property insurance for most insurance companies, and it has a direct bearing on insurance costs to our citizen. The rating is based on the fire department, water delivery system, and emergency communication systems. On a scale of 1 to 11, with 1 as the best rating, Sioux Falls has a rating of 3. We were last evaluated by the ISO in 1998 and expect a new rating next year. Later this year, we are glad to be open in our 10th Street Station. We expect our new station at 10th and Chicago to be open for business in September. It will immediately provide improved response time to the east-side neighborhood in Sioux Another way we're bringing you even better service is by focusing on our firefighters' fitness. National statistics show that firefighters are at a high risk for line-of-duty death due to heart attack. In 2008, the department focused on improving firefighter fitness to lower that risk. As a result, our fitness improved dramatically. Specifically, the average body fat of our firefighters went down by 3.15 percent, and cardiovascular endurance went up by 3.57 percent points. We will continue to focus on improving firefighter fitness in 2009. The city also helps support the overall health of our community through our clinic, and there is clearly a growing demand for these services. Between 2007 and 2008, visits to our Falls Community Health Clinic increased Between 2007 and 2008, visits to our Falls Community Health Clinic increased by 20%. The number of children served increased by 33%. We're also reaching out to our children in need of health care through a school-based clinic at Hawthorne Elementary. We estimate we reached 150 children through this program who might not have otherwise had access to health care. In addition, we're starting a pilot project at Terry Redland Elementary this year, and we'll be evaluating our ability to impact the health care for children at that school. I'm also pleased with how keeping our city safe from the West Nile, how we're keeping our city safe from West Nile virus. The state of South Dakota reported 39 cases of this mosquito-borne illness in 2008, but only two of those cases came from Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties. Our health inspections also continue to produce quality results. We saw a 4% increase in facilities inspected, and in the fall of 2008, for the first time ever, all of our restaurants scored at least 80%. Even better, 92% of our restaurants scored at least 90%. Another significant achievement for our health department is daycare regulation. In 2008, we revised our home daycare ordinance to increase standards and set ratios for the number of children per provider. Not only does this provide added assurance for parents, but we've seen the number of registered daycares increase 5%. Sioux Falls is a wonderful place for families. Part of what makes us so appealing is our park system. In 2008, we saw more than 2.3 million patrons use our park system. They visit our parks, used our swimming pools, played on our golf courses, and skated on our ice rinks. Especially when budgets are tight, it's important that we offer these free or affordable services and amenities for our residents. As an example, year-to-date attendance at our community centers is up 18% from this time last year. The anchor of our park systems is Falls Park. To further improve the experience here, we have started the first phase of development to the North Falls Park Drive. The project includes a parking lot and new Falls Park event shelter. This shelter is a 200-by-42-foot structure that will be completed this May. The shelter will be available for vendors, customers of farmers' market, large company picnics, and other community events. Another popular park is McKinnon. In 2008, we enjoyed a wonderful centennial celebration here, along with many improvements to the park itself. The project was awarded the President's Award of Excellence by the American Society of Landscape Architects, one of the few awards in the region. This phase included expanding the formal gardens, replacing the picnic shelter and half-basketball court, improvement of the tennis court drainage, pathway construction, and various landscaping improvements. The second phase is planned for 2009 and will complete the renovations. We also have made significant investments in baseball and softball facilities. The Harmidon Park Softball Complex was completed in 2008 and is ready for action. It will become the new home of the men's slow-pitch program and will allow them to expand their program by adding all teams on the extensive waiting list. As a result of this project, the Softball Association estimates we could add up to 40 more teams before registration closes. This complex will also be host to its first national tournament in 2009 and be available for other state and local tournaments. In addition to building a new softball complex, we're also concentrated on improving the existing softball complex at Sherman Park. The result is a safer environment for players and spectators, more parking, and better traffic flow. Future projects will reconfigure and renovate fields, ensuring that Sherman Park will maintain its national prominence as a premier softball complex. Another popular feature of our park system is our recreational trail. In 2008, we completed a mile and quarter of trail connecting Dunham Park to Legacy Park on the west side of Sioux Falls. A future project will connect this segment to the main trail loop after the levees are raised for the flood control project. Through a very generous donation from the Elman Foundation, we were also able to build the Elman Trailhead. The trailhead serves as a place for trail users to get on the main trail loop as well as a place to stop and rest. The project includes a restroom, two small picnic shelters, a parking lot, and a connection to West Twelfth Street. The Elman Trailhead is just one example of the wonderful private support we enjoy for our parks. In 2008 alone, we were also the grateful recipients of the Frank L. Boyce Miracle League Baseball Field, tennis courts improvements at Spellerburg, improvements at Harmidon Park, and Yankton Trail Park, land for the new East Side Park and sculptures for McKinnon and Veterans Park. These are all due to private donations, and we truly appreciate everyone who has supported our parks. Just as we see the demand for growing our parks, we also are seeing the economic impact our library system. Usage in 2008, the residents borrowed 1.7 million items, a number that grew throughout the year. In the last two months of 2008, borrowing climbed 19% and visits to branch libraries moved 31%. In the current economy, libraries nationwide are seeing record use, and their services are more important than ever. Some of the most popular services are computer use, children's programming, and public meeting rooms. Last year, the library system began a series of programs for adults. In addition to four already-established book clubs, the library provided a series of job skill seminars, beginning computer classes, and several author events and exhibits. In addition, we offer books online that visitors can download with new titles every week. The biggest change for our library system is the expansion of our downtown main library, which began last April. The 19,000-square-foot addition will soon be finished. The library will continue to be open for most of the rest of the construction, but services will be limited. The final completion is expected in May of 2010. When it's all complete, our new library will be much more welcoming for visitors and give everyone who uses it much-needed space. As that project shows, city buildings can't be expected to last forever. Our aging arena is a perfect example of why we always need to be planning and reinvesting for our future. Last May, I appointed an 18-member task force to work on this significant project. I'm glad that many of them are here with us in the audience today. These are hard-working people, and they truly represent the range of residents we have in Sioux Falls. There are people like Aaron, a recent Augustana College graduate who wants to stay in our city for his career; Jean, an East Side resident who raised her family here and wants her kids to enjoy Sioux Falls in the future; and Charlene, who uses our paratransit service every meeting and reminds us that we need to make sure whatever we build is welcoming for every visitor. These are the people who will help make sure that when we do move forward with an event center, it will belong to all of us and be the best solution for our community. You can learn more about their work on their website, www.souphalseventcenter.org. On this site, you can meet the task force and keep up with their work and go with them on video tours of other facilities. I enjoyed the tour we went when we traveled down to the visited facilities in Sioux City, Omaha, Fargo, and Des Moines. The arenas in these cities all outshine our Sioux Falls arena, which really makes sense because our facility is nearly 50 years old. But the most important thing we learned is the type of impact these facilities can have on a community. For example, since it opened, managers estimate the Fargo Dome has had a $690 million economic impact on the city of Fargo, or $24 million a year. In Des Moines, one major event called Pheasants Forever draws more than 25,000 visitors to the Iowa Event Center. These are opportunities that could come to Sioux Falls if we had improved facilities. Instead, our residents are supporting other cities. For example, managers in Sioux City estimate that up to 46% of people who go to the Tyson Event Center for major concerts are from Sioux Falls. In the next year, you'll hear more from our task force. I realize this process has taken a long time, but I think it's worth the wait. Our task force is looking at opportunities that haven't been explored before. They're considering what type of major athletic events could come to Sioux Falls. Our recent success with the Summit League is a wonderful example, and they're looking at our potential to go out after larger conventions and visitor business. These events are extremely valuable for our community and will help us make sure our new facility is profitable. We're also very aware of the impact our changing economy has had on this project, everything we do. We're not going to rush to build something unless we have a solid financial plan, and we're not going to place an additional challenge on our citizens at a time when most of us are feeling a lot of uncertainty. This is something we think about every single day in city government. We're extremely conscious of the responsibility we have to provide quality services and adjust with the least impact possible to our changing conditions. At the same point, we need to continue to think big and plan well. If we don't, we'll end up losing opportunities to cities that did have a vision and were willing to invest in the future. Sioux Falls is navigating these uncertain waters as well as any other city in America, and we have the potential to emerge much stronger than most. I urge you all to continue believing in Sioux Falls and supporting our great city. I know that our best days are ahead, and thank you very much for coming. Thank you very much.